We'll call the meeting order for the Franklin Town Council for July the 5th, 2022. I'd like to mention before we get started that the Councilman Culpepper can't be here tonight in person. He's going to try to join us by phone. So as a result, when we take votes around the council, it'll be an individual voice vote as recommended by our town attorney. So that we'll have a record of that.
Not my idea. Again, general assemblies to thank for that one.
It keeps us out of trouble. But anyway, we appreciate everybody being here tonight. And I hope everybody had a good 4th of July yesterday. We're celebrating Independence Day. Still one of the best places in the world to celebrate right here in Franklin, North Carolina, right?
Yes.
We're going to, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. Before, before we do that, I'd like to take just a minute to say a few words. We, over the past two months, we've lost a couple of great leaders in this county. First of May, we lost Miles Gregory. Miles was a county commissioner, chairman of the county commissioner, was actually was president of the North Carolina County Commissioners Association. And I had an opportunity to work with him when I worked with the county. He passed away in first of May. He was also chairman of the airport authority and did a lot in public service in our county over a lot of years. The other one was Mr. Jerry Sutton who passed away this past week. Y'all are aware of Sutton's passing away. Mr. Sutton was also a county commissioner, served as chairman. And not only that, but he was also responsible for creating the first volunteer fire department in the county back years and years and years ago. He was served on the school board. He volunteered. He did a lot of things for the community. And he never did want to stand out and be recognized, but he was a great, a great man. When they named the building after him over at the industrial park, I remember somebody saying, if it wasn't me, it was somebody else saying that Jerry Sutton was one of the richest men in Macon County, not because of the money he had, but because of all the friends that he had. I think that was so evident during his funeral services, as well as for Miles Gregory. Those two men, I think, showed vision. They showed courage. They showed leadership. Three things that I think our folks coming along today can admire. And hopefully people who are interested in public service will use them as examples of what to be. So before I ask Mr. Collins to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, I'd like for us to stand and take just one moment of silence as we remember those two fellows and the work that they did in supporting us here in our community and in Franklin. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Jack. We've lost a couple of great men in the county. We really have folks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As many of you know, our town manager's been out with a little bout. Been in the hospital. And so please remember her in your prayers. She'll be back, Officer, soon as soon as she gets through her regimental treatment that she's going through. But we have some capable fillings for us tonight. Our human resources director and our finance director will be covering us from the staff level tonight. So we appreciate them, appreciate them being here. And I had a chance to talk to Amy briefly today. I think she's doing a lot better. So we're looking forward to her recovery and safe return to work. The, we need to make a couple of adjustments to the agenda. One of them is, you'll see on this proclamation, Homeless Veterans Week, we have two proclamations, one for Homeless Veterans Week and another one to celebrate the 100th anniversary of the Macon County VFW. And so we'll present.
American Legion.
I'm sorry.
I know it's your vote.
You can tell, you can tell I'm not a real good politician, right? Anyway, we have, we have proclamations here. We'd like to read and present those tonight. Also, we have some budget amendments that Sarah's been working on to close out the year to correct some, some changes that would need to be made that were may have made an error or, or coded wrong or whatever it might be. So some of those budget amendments will be added when we do the consent agenda. And the last thing that we need to do is have a short close, hopefully a short close session to talk about the possibility of property acquisition. And so are there any other adjustments to the agenda that anyone has? If not, is there a motion that the agenda be adopted with those changes?
Some move.
Ms. Lane?
Second, sir.
Second. Mr. Kimsey. Okay, we'll, we'll call a roll then. Mr. Collins?
Approved.
Ms. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Kimsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
And Mr. Guffey?
Yes.
And Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
Sounds unanimous. Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and we can do these proclamations at this time. I would like to take these in this order. I would like to recognize Macon Post 108 Centennial Day, since that's coming up next. And then we will recognize the Help Homeless Veterans Week right after that. So if you're here for the proclamation for Post 108, if you would come up front, we'd be glad to read this proclamation and present it to you at that time. Those of you who may not know, this is Sherri Newton. She's our vice.
Vice, first vice commander.
First vice commander. And this is our commander, Mr. Ken Carver, who's done a lot of work for veterans through, in this county for years. I remember working on several projects with him when I was still working for the county several years ago. We appreciate your service.
Thank you, sir.
Town of Franklin proclamation, whereas the American Legion has been a staunch advocate for veterans and their families since 1919. And whereas the American Legion was founded on the four pillars of care for veterans, strong national defense, Americanism, and children and youth. And whereas the American Legion has played a leading role in initiatives and breakthroughs that have affected the lives of Americans in every community, from the U.S. Flag Code to the GI Bill. And whereas Macon Post 108 of Franklin has fulfilled the legion's mission since its chartering in 1922 by cooperating to construct the and maintain the veterans memorial park for the benefit of the public by helping to bring VA outpatient clinic to Franklin by jointly providing military funerals throughout the decades for deceased veterans of Franklin and the surrounding communities, by visiting and seeing to the needs of our veterans at home and residing in the three assisted living facilities, by placing flags at the graves of our veterans, by properly and ceremoniously disposing of unserviceable U.S. flags by delivering time, money, materials, and manpower to numerous charities and other organizations, by teaching the democratic process through its voice state program, by proving financial support to needy veterans, providing to their family, by supporting our servicemen and women when deployed overseas, by sponsoring and supporting the scouting movement, and by numerous other noble causes. And whereas Macon Post 108, the town's oldest and largest veterans organization, is celebrating its centennial year, 1922-2022. Now therefore, I see Jack Horton, Mayor of Franklin, North Carolina, on behalf of the Franklin Town Council, who hereby proclaim July 11th, 2022, as Macon Post 108 Centennial Day. In witness whereof, I have here unto Sutton, my hand, and he calls this to be affixed in the official seal of the Town of Franklin, North Carolina, on this 5th day of July, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf, yes, on behalf of the post, thank you. And we hope to continue our legacy for another hundred years.
Oh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your commitment to the youth in this county.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that.
Now we have the Help Homeless Veterans Week. And some folks that I've known and worked with in the past that do a great job of helping provide assistance to homeless veterans in our county and throughout western North Carolina. I had a chance to meet with them this past year. They do a terrific job. I'd like for them to come up as we read and present this proclamation. This proclamation, the Town of Franklin proclamation is, whereas the Town of Franklin proclaims the week of September 4th, 2022 through September 10th, 2022, to be set aside as a week of public support for our homeless veterans, thereby encouraging our citizens to support the efforts to help homeless and distressed veterans. And whereas the efforts of the men's group of the First Presbyterian Church of Franklin have earned the goodwill and positive response from our local merchants, thereby allowing the men's group to place donation collection receptacles in their establishments. And whereas the First Presbyterian Church Men's Group will manage the receptacles and collect the donations received, be used in support of ongoing programs for our homeless veterans of western North Carolina. Now therefore, I see Jack Horton, Mayor, on behalf of the Town Council for the Town of Franklin, North Carolina, who hereby proclaim the week of September 4th through September 10th as homeless. Next item we have is approval of our consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to have removed for further discussion? Hearing those, hearing none, is there a motion that the consent agenda be approved?
Motion.
Mr. Collins makes the motion, the second?
Second.
Mr. Guffey. Roll call for approval. Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Culpepper?
Aye.
Ms. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Kimsey?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Guffey?
Aye.
That was unanimous. Thank you all. The consent agenda is approved. We now have item number six, our public session. Do we have anyone who has signed up for public session? We have Mr. Tim Shaw, who is here to speak during public session. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the opportunity to speak today. And Skate28 sends out its best wishes to those who couldn't be with us tonight. I'd like to give you an update on Skate28's fundraising efforts for the past 30 days. As you know, we had a musical fundraiser at Alternate Frequencies, and it was a huge success. Not only was it a fun concert, it raised a lot of money for Franklin's skate park project. In conjunction with the concert, we had a hot dog dinner. It was sponsored by Hot Spot Convenience Mart's and the Jordan Family, Coca-Cola, and others. Jen and James Stanley worked tirelessly all day in the heat, feeding the hungry crowd, and they raised $845 just selling hot dogs. There were approximately 300 attendees to the event, raising approximately $5,000 in ticket sales and T-shirt sales. John Cisneros, the local businessman, and Alex Screambrin made all the concert T-shirts for us, and they were a big hit. The live fundraising auction raised approximately $2,400 and was a lot of fun. We had 11 bands donate their time and their musical prestige to the concert for free, which is amazing. Some of them came from out of state to be there, just to raise money for the skate park. We had over 70 businesses and individuals and artists donate goods and services to the auction. We also had donation checks of approximately $4,000 just from local realtors. They of all businesses know the positive impact that a great new skate park has on incoming potential family home buyers, and especially a big, great, new public park. Families want that, and families need that. And it's good for local business. All in all, we raised over $13,000 on Saturday. It was a coordinated effort of many skaters, parents, grandparents, and some great local business owners, and the town and the county's support. So we thank you for that. And now I'd like to call up a couple of local businessmen, Matt Jackson and Jimbo Ledford. They have something they'd like to say too. Thank you.
You didn't know what I was supposed to say. He just told me we were doing this today. We just, Matt was real hard. We went down. That was our fundraiser. He's the one that went out to all the businesses. Mr. Culpepper, the mayor, he donated, was a huge success. That brought a lot of fun to the auction. And we just wanted to present this check from a coordinated effort between Alternate Frequencies and Skate28 Franklin and many other local businesses. I mean, there are so many people who are involved in making this happen. So we present this to the Region A Foundation, which is the foundation that's collecting the money for the skate park. A check for, what is it, Matt? $13,049.
I feel very proud of this community. And I know it's Dr. Brittany's friend there. How I was honestly jaded. I thought that this town would never want something like this. And overwhelming support. Every single person, every single business I went out and talked to instantly just wanted to give. So very, very proud of this community today. Very.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
We appreciate what you're doing and continuing to do that. This is a very worldwide project. The town has been supporting of it for a while, and we hope to see it continue. And one of these days, people will be able to use it. So we'll just have to continue working. And appreciate all the effort that you all and all those people who volunteered their time and of course, their money to help make this a reality. And so we're looking forward to that being open. Thank you all for your work. We have no one else who has signed up for public session. Anyone come in who did not get an opportunity to sign up? If not, we will move on to item number seven under new business. And we need to set a public hearing for the rezoning on Sloan Street for August the 1st, 2022. Mr. Setser will bring us up to date on that particular item.
Yeah, this is a, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. This is a rezoning for Mr. James Martin. He's wanting to rezone 1.69 acres off Sloan Street from, that he owns from residential to, or from commercial down to residential. Planning Board's seen this and has sent the recommendation. So we're just simply here tonight to set a hearing. And we'll go into more detail after the hearing.
You said the planning board's reviewed it and recommended to go ahead and set the public hearing for that?
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions? Is there a motion that we set a public hearing for the rezoning for 6:05 PM on August 1st, 2022?
Some move.
Who was that? Okay, Mr. Lewis made a motion. Is there a second?
Adam.
Sure.
Mr. Kimsey makes the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Culpepper?
Aye.
Ms. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Kimsey?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Guffey?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We'll set that and advertise it properly. Our attorney has a resolution concerning the skate park design build contract, and I'll ask him to bring that before the board at this time.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Your last break in the meeting, we had a brief mention of the potential to procure your skate park project through a little bit of a different method than you would have used in the past for construction. The default under state law is if it's construction that's over $30,000, you have to at least informally bid it. And if it's over $500,000, you've got to formally bid it all. But in any case, if you're anywhere in there, you're expected to pick the lowest responsive responsible bidder. And that's a legal standard that basically means when they turn in their bid for it, if you don't have a reason to disqualify a bidder, if they're the bottom dollar, you've got to take them. You have to take the lowest bid and, and use that for your contractor. For a variety of reasons, and particularly with a project like this, where you don't want just anybody who knows how to pour concrete. You have really substantially specialized work in the design and the construction of this project. So you want somebody who really know upfront, knows how to get it right. And you've already done quite a bit of procuring design through the architects you already used. What this model, design build, does is say, instead of going out for that, whatever our cheapest bid is to get the construction done, we're instead going to put out an RFQ that says, we are looking for, and that's request for qualifications, instead of just to hear, give us your lowest bid. It says, we're going to interview some firms that do this kind of work and find who's the best to, to come and construct it in a quality fashion. And they're, they're going to work with the designers through that same contract. It may be that you assign the architectural work you've already done to be integrated into that contract together. In order to do that, again, we're kind of stepping away from the kind of de facto way of bidding in North Carolina. You have to adopt, and this resolution I've given you here, I gave you a memo that kind of explains all of this. You need to adopt a resolution that sets forth kind of the criteria in which you're going to look to use this kind of specialized procurement process instead of the sort of default. So I'm happy to answer any questions about this. This is not, there's not a dollar committed to this yet. You're not, this is just, again, outlining the criteria in which we're going to do it. And also, we're going to direct your, your administration to move ahead with that RFQ and begin the process and start to find your, who your alternate contractor's going to be for that. That's all going to come back to you for approval of contracts and everything. So we're, don't feel like we're, you know, out on, too far on the limb yet. But this is a step in that process. And again, I do recommend it as a procurement method. I think it's a much better fit than just who will pour concrete the cheapest, if that makes sense. So happy to answer any questions, but I do recommend you adopt this resolution as presented.
And this resolution just gives the town board the ability to use this method to secure someone to actually construct the skate park?
Yes, sir.
Instead of going through the typical standard bid requirements where you may get someone who has absolutely no experience at all on doing a project like this, but may have the lowest bid.
That's right.
John, in the resolution, do we have to say, which, you have two kinds of resolutions in that. So I can't remember what your, what it finally said.
Yeah, and I hope that wasn't too much information for you in the memo. I thought, oh, I'm addressing design build. I'll tell you about this other, it's related, but slightly different thing called design build bridging. You don't need to worry about what that is. I just thought I'd inform you about it. The only resolution here is to proceed with design build.
Okay. And my second question on that is, it sounded like you said that the, what we've already done with pillar designs could be worked into that, that that could be an integral part of the RFQ?
Yes. Because you've already, you know, you went ahead and procured the initial design and, and you know, what we think we're going to use as our, our footprint and our design for this. But you're, you're not done with your architect at that point. You still want him to oversee construction and check it as it's done, make sure it's, it's what you intended it to be. So that's, you've, you've done part of the work already, but it integrates pretty seamlessly into a design build process.
Thank you. No downside to moving forward with this.
It just gives you the other option.
Just to road them out.
It probably happens unless you pass a resolution.
Just to road them out. Yeah.
Any other questions for the attorney? Is there a motion concerning the recommendation from the town's attorney for the design build contract option for the town council?
Some move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Guffey, second by Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Culpepper seconded that one, I believe.
Oh, Mr. Culpepper seconded it.
Yeah.
I didn't see him over there. I'm sorry.
He was waving.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, since, since we don't do discussion during public comment, I wanted to, and we're on the subject of the skate park.
Good.
I just wanted to say a couple of things. That, you know, all the big things that have happened in the town of Franklin and Macon County are all done through partnerships. And I think it's a good time in Macon County when the town and the county can partner together with, with independent groups and private businesses to make something like this happen. And I'd like to publicly thank Alternate Frequencies and Skate28 for your efforts. I saw you guys on Saturday night, and I know you were worn out, but it was, it was well worth it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote then. Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Culpepper?
Aye.
Ms. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Kimsey?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Guffey?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item we have, item C, is contract with Watson Contracting on the Maple Street Sewer Line project. This is a project that's been ongoing. Perhaps our finance director can give us some more details if necessary. This is not a new contract. This is a continuation of, of the contract that's underway right now. And perhaps Mr. Bill, our public works director, can answer any questions that the board may have concern of this project.
Yes, I think Bill can fill you in a little bit on the need for this, why we need this.
Oh, she knows.
You can speak better.
So what this is, is this is a continuation of Maple Street Sewer Line that was not figured in with the original sewer line project. They got us over to the manhole in front of the firehouse. And from there, it goes across the street over towards the meat market with a still six inch line. So this is the two brick piece, that line going across Crawford Branch over to the meat market and tied in with the bigger sewer line. So this was overlooked before. So we're trying to make sure we do this right. Because what we've done is took the possibility of spills above this location, and we routed it to this location. But if you do not increase that sewer line to an eight inch, you have the possibility of having overflows right there. So it's our recommendation that we do this right. And so it's not sooner than later. So that's the recommendation from Public Works that we contract with Watson's to get this finished up.
Bill, is that the line that runs under the shopping center?
No, this one doesn't run under the shopping center. Justin has my, if he wants to plug in my zip drive, I have a picture of this location. If he'll bring it up. And I also have one on the side. If it will work, I'll show you guys where this location's at.
I don't know if it'll work.
It may not work.
They may not work, but they've been on board. So we'll just pass this around. So it's essentially a change directed to the contract we've already got. That contract is completed. They have done that work to where they were at.
Start, what, say again, John, what you just asked him?
Well, so when you're minstering with a contract, you can either change order that says with what we're already doing, we've got to beef up the size or the, the cost are more than we thought they would be, or, you know, things like that. If it's, it adds to the project, you can change directive and say, now I have this section to the same contract, but it sounds like we. This one, we did reach out for others to fit in with. We have a new contract. And we didn't receive any other than this one.
So is the, the line in bad shape or it just needs to have more volume?
It is in bad shape. It's a verified clay pipe that hooks in to.
A verified clay pipe. Sounds like a.
Yeah, it's, it's.
That right there is all you need to know.
It does hook into a double iron pipe as it crosses Crawford Branch. But if we don't fix this part and it spills into Crawford Branch, there's no amount of water that can hit that stream without it being a penalty. So any one drop of water hits that sewer, water hits that creek, we're in trouble. So it's our recommendation that we go ahead and do this right and fix it up, then we don't have any more issues right there. There'll be some, there'll be some road repair too, because that does go across the road.
Well, that ties in with us trying to get rid of this old clay pipe too, correct? I mean.
I think David had a question.
Yeah, do we have the money or where's the money coming from?
We have been working with the manager on that, and we do have, I'll let Sarah answer that question. That's her line, not mine.
We do have some funds in, built into our capital outlay improvements that we built for this year. Um, so there are funds available now since we have not designated the other projects yet that you guys.
That's out of the water sewer fund, not the general fund.
Water sewer, yes.
And will it be a new contract or just?
I think it will need to be, because it sounds like we're really back on the ground floor for a new, it's effectively a new project. But it's, we do lots of these. I just didn't need to know which type of.
Two weeks in, we're rating the petty cash fund, Rita.
And it's going to cost how much?
I think we've got enough petty cash to do it.
It's fifty. If I've been mistaken, what is it?
It's fifty-eight thousand five hundred.
And I've juke them down as far as I can go. So if anybody else wants to challenge anything, you know.
We've been through the legal process.
The contractor who's been working on the project is willing to do this. We have the money in the budget, uh, available in the budget through, not petty cash for this, call it something else, I think, but to, to cover the additional costs of this addition to the original contract.
And what I would say is not to say that that way, but we've took out some things that we didn't need in this contract that we saw that wasn't going to be feasible for us, so we changed that, make this work. So that's the, that's the contract process that we now have.
And didn't we save some money by saving some of that sidewalk instead of tearing the whole sidewalk up?
That is correct.
Okay. Good job.
So when would this start?
David told me they cannot start this till fall of this year, because that's how far behind all of our contractors are doing work.
So there's no real advantage that they're on site right now to, to dig, but, but still they're the ones that.
Right.
Got to do it, don't they?
Got to do it. Well, the last Turk, the last Turk caught a line, you know what happened there?
That was expensive, wasn't it?
It was very expensive.
Was that a motion, Mike?
It is.
Or a movement.
We, uh, you've, you've heard the recommendation from the public works director and the finance director, and you have a, uh, motion by Mr. Lewis to approve the recommendation. And is there a second to the motion?
I can.
I'll second.
Mr. Culpepper seconded. I didn't see his hand. Uh, I'm just kidding around. Okay, all right. Uh, any further discussion? Here and now, we'll call the roll. Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Culpepper.
Yes.
Ms. Lane.
Yes.
Mr. Kimsey.
Aye.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Guffey.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your, good work, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council.
Bring this to item C, discussion of the Franklin Police Department staffing. As you're all well aware, uh, staffing of police departments in small, medium-sized, and large municipalities and counties has been hard to accomplish over the past couple of years. We're no exception here. The chief has done some study on it. He's talked to our finance director. We've talked to HR a little bit about it, and he's presented some information for the board's review. And, uh, chief, would you like to say a few words about this item?
I was a little curious, anything more to add than what I've contained in the memo that presented to you all tonight and the information that we've been inputting so far. We haven't been able to get all that data in, because obviously everybody's racing to close out their budgets and open their new ones. So some of the other adjacent entities that we've been reaching out to haven't exactly gotten back with us before tonight's meeting, of course, but we're still gathering that data and hopefully getting direction from you all tonight on how to proceed.
We're also talking to some other municipalities in our region about what they're doing to recruit and retain, and some of the information is included in your report. We'll continue to reach out, as the chief says, to find out anything else that's coming along that has been successful in filling the vacancies that we have. Now, we have, uh, we have maybe six vacancies now, but we do have an opportunity for one new recruit coming in, so, uh, but right now, we're, we're just not getting a lot of applications to, to work in public safety.
Correct. As I pointed out in memorandum, uh, the inquiries that we're, we're getting almost immediately when they, you know, find out what we have to offer, they're redirecting their interest elsewhere, and we're losing. Um, so obviously, we are asking, um, for you all to please review our current position and see what we can do to make ourselves more attractive for those people that we sorely need. Um, you know, manager Owens and myself have been working on this, but unfortunately, circumstances haven't allowed that to happen. Time is of the essence. Uh, the recent BLT class, uh, just left me that number, but anyway, they were supposed to have started in two days. We got pushed back to September, no specific date as of yet, because they had not got the state mandated in, uh, to start the academy. And two of them were probably going to be ours, um, one for certain, but the other one we were working on. Uh, anyway, um, so that has been pushed back to September, but that doesn't still give us a whole lot of time, because as we start to vet people, it takes a minimum of two months. And it's, it's not, you know, any fault of ours, but there's obviously several other resources that we have to lean on in order to process someone and get them ready to go in the academy. Uh, to even hire someone as a lateral transfer, you're looking at several months. Uh, we started the one that we currently have that hopefully will be here on Friday to start work, uh, the following Friday. Um, we have literally been processing her for an out-of-state lateral transfer since early March, mid-February. Um, so if that tells you anything, it's, you know, we're reaching the cross borders, the phone borders to try to make those things happen. And then we are at the mercy of other agencies as well, including resources and exercises we have to put them through. Uh, as I stated in there, um, you know, polygraphers, psychologists, just to name a few, um, to include all the legwork we had to provide during the background. So it's, you know, it's a race, literally, uh, to try to, you know, get people's foot in the door in a timely manner, because if they don't close this class in September, they're not going to offer another one according to the beam until next year. So.
Anyone have a question for the chief? I'm hoping that our town manager, she's optimistic that she'll be back to work perhaps as early as next week. And I would like, uh, to recommend that we get together with the chief, our town manager, our HR director, and a finance officer, to see what will work as far as budget goes, and come up with a specific proposal that the board can consider at our next meeting. If we can do that, and you'll know what it's going to cost, where it's going to come from, and how effective you think it might be, perhaps we can go ahead and stem the tide, because we've got to have police officers. People may or may not know, in order to work as a police officer in a municipality in North Carolina, you have to have basic law enforcement training certificate. Is that correct?
Oh, absolutely.
So it's a tough process. So we appreciate all the folks that are actually doubling up and doing extra duty to try to cover the bases during the shortage of personnel.
You've got several officers that are wearing multiple hats, done a whole lot of work.
Mm-hmm.
And unfortunately, we were called out recently just past Sunday on a, uh, terrible situation, you know, already going into this moment. And, um, so everybody was coming out after working long hours, um, the days before to put in more hours and upcoming, uh, for the next several days because of this investigation.
I do want to express to those officers who are working that we appreciate their dedication and their loyalty, and that this town board supports our law enforcement, our police department, and will do what we can to make sure that we make it the best possible. So thank you for your work. Thank you for putting this information together. We look forward to getting the final resolution of this thing as quickly as possible.
And I just want to add that you guys do have in front of you the memo that Chief Harrell, um, prepared for you, as well as a packet of information that Ms. Bradley and Chief Harrell have gathered, that's got surrounding municipalities and county governments, their pay plans as well as ours.
Gives you something to compare.
Gives you a little information so you can compare, if you have questions, um, or anything.
Well, I'll say this, our benefit package can compete with any agency in this part of the state. It's our pay is what we've got to look at. I mean, we really do.
And that, that is actually what you have in front of you. We, I don't, this will provide a benefit information. If you guys would like to see some of that, we will be glad to go back. But, um, really pay is the basis of this.
I know you haven't had the opportunity, obviously, to review this information, because it was in short order enough, but just bear in mind, um, there's a lot of information, a lot of blanks there that still need to be filled. And some of those were simply because when the new budget started, a lot of these places got totaled. And so what you're looking at are probably some old numbers. There might be a handwritten number at the bottom that just kind of consider that, depending on the agency that, you know, information we've received by now has already been submitted. Uh, but there are several other blanks in there that are the agencies that we've moved people to, um, and, and they have obviously offered them better opportunities, and that's hard to argue. I know. You just can't argue that when you're talking about officers that are even for seven to eight thousand dollars more. Um, that's, I mean, it's, it's really a little bit of an argument, so there's no point in even hosting it.
And these younger guys don't give a flip about benefits. It's the money.
Yeah. They retire when you get closer to our age, you know.
So that changes when you get past forty.
Yeah. They haven't thought about, you know, the alarm clock for next morning at this point.
Any other questions?
How, how are you handling? I mean, do, I probably should know, do we pay overtime or how? We do.
We do, but again, you're, people get worn out pretty quick.
Yeah.
Working twenty-four seven.
Oh, yeah. Overtime's the worst. You pay a lot more and you get less down, just because of the work.
Exactly. You know, they do the very best they can, but there's obviously studies on how much time you can actually, you know, put in the work.
Right.
Without losing the quality of work. And so we have to be careful we don't do that, because we don't have a job that we can afford to lose the quality of work.
There's state guidelines about working somebody so many hours in law enforcement, am I not correct?
Absolutely. FLSA, uh, sets forth some guidelines. So just us, paramedics, firefighters, we all enter, we ring the same bell.
Is there a minimum level of service that we're required by law to provide?
Um, that is not anything that's in black and white.
And that, and a second, like a follow-up question to that would be, if we have coverage that's inadequate and an incident were to occur, does the town face any consequences in terms of liability?
As we look at, John.
We would probably, I mean, there's a, there's a really good defense for any, that's a very factually loaded thing, and it would be very factually driven. There's a pretty good defense to the general kind of condition you're talking about called the public duty doctrine, that says that you operate a police department and their duty runs to the entire public, not to any one individual. So, you know, I called them when we didn't get here in time to stop this thing from happening, and I had damages as a result. It's not something somebody should win, and all other things being equal. Because we don't, they don't owe a duty. The town and half of this department doesn't owe a duty to any one person. Um, but that's not the kind of thing you want to hang your hat on or want, that's not something you want the town to, to have to say. And so, you know, you're, you're better off to fully staff in the way that your chief says you need to, if you, if you can.
I think long answer short is, anybody will sue for anything.
That's right.
Yeah.
Thank you, chief. Thank you for your work.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Tell those guys thank you and tell them to hang in there.
Mr. Attorney, do you have anything for legal?
Yes, sir.
We, uh, have, uh, a recommendation to go into closed session to consider property acquisition.
And so the, the motion is to cite GS one forty-three dash eighteen point one one